Careful Jamie, that's contagious.
This is my third Zoom in a row tonight. It just, everything got, somehow reason got jammed into today. It was off kilter because of the holidays and stuff and somehow everybody picked today, so.
Hey Debbie? Debbie? My cell.
She's still trying to get on Facebook.
She just gave you the thumbs up.
She's naming live on Facebook. Now it went.
Press has to go.
Okay.
Is that a thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Good evening everyone. This is KP Kelly, I'm the chairman for the zoning board of appeals and it's 6:30 and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The first thing we're gonna do is a pledge allegiance and if you all stand please. Get my hefty little flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, individual and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Tonight we have two appeals to hear and decide whether to grant or deny the applicant's request for a variance based on the established zoning laws of the town of Manlis. But next, we'll go over the minutes of the last meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
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 Any corrections or changes or? Everything okay?
Can I make a motion during the minutes?
Please make a motion.
I make that motion.
Thank you Tim, second?
I'll second.
Thank you Tim. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So the minutes, the last meeting will be accepted as written, thank you. Next we'll, the legal notices for tonight's agenda was published. And do I have a motion to waive the reading of the legal notices?
I saw move.
Thank you Jim, and a second?
I second it.
Thank you Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, so we waive the reading of the legal notices. Uh, let's see, the next thing, or the first thing on the agenda is Steve and Gail Rich. Are they here this evening? They're not here, are they? No.
I believe they had stated they would not be in attendance this evening, we could entertain the applicant.
We can. JB by the way is our attorney and that's why we've got all this great legal advice. So we can go ahead and do it without them here? Yes, okay, good. Alright, so they've got an existing 10 by 12 shed in their backyard, I think it's new. And we need to grant or deny a variance for this. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing on this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Tim, a second please.
A second.
Judy, thank you. Alright, normally the applicant would tell us what's going on, but like I said, they have a 10 by 12 shed in their backyard. And
Randy, you know the background of this. Do you like to clue us in?
Can you pull it up on the thing? Debbie? I just wanna see the survey a second.
Give me one sec, I'll pull it up.
Yep. Deb, can you go to the part that I marked up on the survey? Yep, keep going down. Right there.
Okay. Alright, very good. Any comments on that Randy?
No.
I'm sorry?
No, he just doesn't wanna put it in the middle of his lawn. On it and the lot is so small that if he puts it over and up, it's gonna put him by the nine somewhere, which is almost in the middle of his backyard.
Right, right.
It's consistent with other sheds in the neighborhood.
Yeah, most of the ones on this street, they're all in the back. I just happen to live on this street, but they're all in the back corner of the lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all, almost back to back, there's many of them that they're in the same location type thing. But
KP, I believe that the applicant answered the criterion questions and I, they're probably, if Deb scans down, we can find that. Or scans up some direction.
Jamie, if I'm not mistaken with this one? He had a 10 by 10 there. He got rid of it. Put a 10 by 12 there, not realizing that the extra two foot, he needed a variance for it. So to make it legal, we told him to come in, but there was a shed right where it is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was delivered about three weeks ago, right Randy?
Yeah, yep.
Very good, very good. Okay. Any of the board members have any questions about, that we could have on this? No?
When I visited Mr. Rich, he was very apologetic for not realizing he needed a permit. And the new shed looks pretty good, it's the same color as the house and the dark, the dark roof match is the house too.
Yeah.
Probably one of the better sheds in his little four corners there.
Right, right. Alright, well does any, anybody from the audience have any questions that they need to answer for this? No? Okay. Any other comments from? Well, let's close the, let's have a motion to close the public hearing on this motion.
I'll make that motion.
And a second please.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the the motion to close is approved and now we'll have a discussion among ourselves as is normal. I'm gonna ask the five questions. The applicant already made their made their answers known in their application. And so we need to discuss it. Let's see here. Okay, here we go. Whether the benefit can be sought by the applicant, can be achieved by some other some other is there some other way of doing this without causing or needing a variance? Any comments?
Aside from like Randy said, putting it in the middle of the yard, I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Judy, any?
No, I agree.
And like, like Randy said, it's in line with almost all the other sheds in that section of the street.
Right, right, okay. You think it'll make a change in the character of the neighborhood?
No, it's in with probably the rest.
Go ahead.
I was saying it fits in with everything else that's in the neighborhood.
Thanks, thank you Judy, yeah, yeah. You think the variance is substantial?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
No.
Yeah? You think it's gonna have an impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No, I don't think so, no. That's not, Randy, that's not in a drainage ditch or anything back there, is it? On that real lot line? You think it's okay? You, I think you mute.
I walked back there.
Randy? Randy, you're mute. There you go.
I'm trying to hit the button. No, there's, there's no interference whatsoever.
Yeah, very good, thank you, yeah. And Jim, you look at it, there's no problem?
Yeah, I walked back there, behind there, this it's all, you know, pretty flat and it kinda slopes down there anyway, so, a little bit.
Okay, alright. Okay. You think this was self-created?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure. Alright, so with those answers, should we, the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood? Or community? Should we go with that?
Yes.
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 Okay. And alright. Alright, so what we're asking for here is we're asking for two variances, or the applicant's asking for two variants. The rear let's see, the rear lot line has five feet is needed. Or, I'm sorry, he has five, needs a variance of 15 to meet the 20 foot setback from the rear lot line. Okay? And then here's the side setback. Again, he has five and he needs five. So there's two variances that we need. So should somebody make a motion to grant or deny this gentleman? His variances on these two on, grant or deny the variances he's needed for this shed? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I propose that Gail and Stephen Rich, the 304 Homewood Drive in Fayetteville be granted two variances for a 10 by 12 shed. They need they have an existing rear yard setback of five feet. I propose we grant a variance of 15 feet to meet the required 20 foot setback. They also have an existing side yard setback of five feet and I propose they be granted a variance of five feet to meet the required 10 foot setback.
Okay, somebody wants a second then?
The only amendment that we would need to make with that is you just have to identify that it's 304 Homewood Drive Fayetteville.
It's what?
The 304 Homewood Drive, he didn't mention the address.
Oh, I thought I did, but.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the variances have been approved granted for for this shed. Okay. Now we'll put that one aside, thank you. And we'll go to the second one. The second one is the construction of a swimming pool by Jane Amico? Is that right?
Yes, Amico, yes.
Okay. The, so I need a motion to open the public hearing for this variance on this pool.
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion, oops.
Okay, a second please?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you Jim. Alright, so the public hearing is hello?
With the vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So Mr. Amico, if you give us an explanation or explain what you need, what's going on?
This is my husband Brian McCray.
Oh, Brian, sure. First, that's why I picked on you first, but.
All to say, no, thank you very much for the time this evening. Yeah, so we're looking to construct a swimming pool in our backyard. And based on the location of the house and our deck, we're requesting a variance for the rear setback.
Deb, can you please pull that up, excuse me? Thank you.
Hold on just a minute, I'll, I'll bring it up.
We have Pierre here, our landscape architect that has been working on this with us as well. So any other technical questions Nathan is certainly prepared to answer as well.
Evening everyone.
Did a standing job too.
Yeah, so as Brian mentioned, we're looking for a variance of, it's roughly 17 feet, 17 feet, three inches to be exact.
Alright. Questions, have you contacted your neighbors?
Yes, we've spoken to both neighbors in the rear and to the side. This has been something we've been looking at for a couple of years and have had discussions with them over the years and now in a position to be able to do this and I wanted to do it correctly, so we hired Nathan and his firm to help us through the process to make sure. We situated the pool correctly and are dealing with all of the grading issues that need to happen for this.
Yeah, the grading, grading point is important because you're downhill slope on the one side there, on the right side. We need to have a big pool party and then have all the water from the pool kinda splash down on your neighbors there. So that's, that's all been taken care of?
Yes.
Right, yeah. Okay. It's, I don't know if I said, it's a 36 by 18 rectangular shaped pool? Right?
Yes, correct.
It appears to have, are you gonna have some walls, retaining walls that slope difference?
Pull up the site plan, you'll be able to see it there KP.
I can walk everybody through the site plan too, once we get it on screen.
Yeah.
Is there a way to rotate that or? It's not necessary, but.
Are these, look, the lines that we see are around the end of the pool there. Is that
Perfect.
Okay, is that gonna be retaining walls or is it just slope lines?
So, to the south, those are contours indicating the grade, the slope of the lawn. The retaining walls are to the south of the existing deck. There's one right there that we're putting in. Another one to the right of the staircase, north of the pool. And then we have a little wall coming off the south corner, the southeast corner of the house. Grade slopes down from the north to south. And this was really the only spot to put the pool. The Jane and Brian have a walkout and they really wanted to be able to utilize that at their patio.
Yeah.
That we're proposing around the pool. There's also mature evergreens to the, to the north and they wanted to keep those all intact. As they, as they said, they've been talking to their neighbor to the south about the drainage. And we've, we've looked into putting a little depression in between there, directing water into a low area. This plan doesn't reflect that, but we understand that we can't let water just go right onto their property to the south and Jane and Brian have been very good, they, they won't let that happen.
Okay, we could add those to the minutes to this this meeting? Those comments, right? Hello?
Yes, we can add those. I got it.
Yeah, I I don't expect any problem, but just to make sure if there is a problem and we did have this discussion and you guys are gonna take care of that.
Yeah, that's really important to us, we have a great relationship with both of our neighbors. And drainage, we don't, we don't want to flood their, their property, so if we were not able to solve that problem, we would not have put, we would not have moved forward and Nathan has done an excellent job with kinda giving us that solution, which we feel very comfortable with and we'll share with our neighbors so they are aware of what the drainage requirements on our end are going to be.
Mm-hmm, okay. Alright, basically the drainage is any, I'll call it water that comes out of the pool basically is, you know. Okay, I think I covered that one.
Yeah, it's, we'll note really excuse me, we'll note really quick that it's not, it's not just for the drainage out of the pool, but we wanna capture some of the surface runoff. It's from uphill and around their property and stop that from going on to the neighbors too, so.
Okay.
To improve their situation from what it is now.
Okay, alright, very good. Anybody on the board have any other questions or comments or?
I was gonna ask about the trees, but you know, that was stated that you wanna retain those, so that makes sense to me. They're very nice looking trees.
Yeah, and we'd also like to add, we're gonna add some trees, so we're gonna keep the landscaping and keep it within the character of the neighborhood.
It's a little difficult to see, but in between the pool and the property line, in, in a very light gray, we're proposing a row of new trees there, it's roughly 20 feet of green space.
Okay, okay. Very good, very good. Yes sir, Randy?
What's the total drop off from the southeast corner of the pool to the southeast corner of the property line?
Uh four and a half feet.
Okay.
Uh, it's four and a half feet to our proposed grading limits and then another couple feet on top of that, so you're looking at just around six feet from the very corner of the property line to the corner of our pool.
Is that gonna be like a one constant grade or are you gonna grade it? Wallet, grade it?
Um We have a little level area right adjacent to the concrete apron of the pool. And then we're going into a slight depression and then it'll slope down uniformly to the property line.
Perfect.
I mean, the slope will be, you know, easily maintain, it's gonna be consistent with what's, what's there now, mowable and maintainable.
Okay. Is that slope gonna be for the runoff water, the storm water and move it through there?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
We're taking, we take, we're capturing the water from the patio and those slit drains, those trench drains, we're, we're bringing them out to those lawn depressions. It'll be east of the pool and then south of the pool, lawn depressions there and maintaining you know, infiltration. And then we have the depression stretching west alongside that southern property line parallel. So they're using the rest of their property to capture storm water there too.
Perfect.
Very good, very good. Any of the other board members? Any comments or questions?
I think those, the drainage solutions kinda answers most of the questions.
Yeah, that's right, it does, yeah, it does, yeah.
I would assume that would help with some of the drainage off the pool behind you too, just the way the grade of the neighborhood is.
Yes, it seems like everybody kinda is taking water from their neighbor in this area.
Yes, yeah. The whole neighborhood kinda goes downhill. As we're looking at it from top to bottom. But anyways. Any other questions? No? Alright, let's have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. A motion please?
I make a motion, we close it?
Okay, a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing part of this is closed, now we need to discuss it among the board members and the applicant and so you guys can sit and watch, you know, but again, the the five questions. Question one, whether the benefit can be sought by, can be achieved by some other way?
No.
What they're doing is about the only way they can do that pool. Right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You think it'll make a produce a change in the character of the neighborhood?
There's quite a few pools in the neighborhood, so that's gonna be right in keeping with the
It'd be right with it, well, yeah. Uh, you think the variance is gonna be substantial?
No.
No, no? Alright, would the variance have an impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No, I think they solved that with the drainage.
I think, I think we covered that. And then you think the difficulty was self-created?
Yeah, they wanna put in a pool, so.
They wanna put in a pool, yeah, okay. Yeah. Alright, so then based on our answers you think the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That one. And so ZB A for the fines for a variance of, let me find my numbers here. Let's see, we have a rear lot line, the pool is 22 foot from the rear line, needs 18 foot variances. Right?
Right.
Correct.
Alright. So that should be an 18 foot variance. And that is, shall be granted to order and preserve to protect of the character, the neighborhood, the health, safety and welfare of the community. Any conditions we need to put on that? Randy?
I would just add on a couple of feet, give them a little bit of leeway, because right through that section, it's a shell. And if they hit enough rocks, they might have to shift the pool a foot or two because of the rocks in that area. And if they have to shift it, then they would have to come back in again.
Yeah.
Do you propose doing like 20 feet?
I would, just to give them a little bit of leeway in case they have to shift it, because there's so much rock in that area.
Board members agree, 20 feet, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we do that without another notice?
Yeah, I don't
Yes, yes, it would be there's notice of the variance, it's not, it's minimal enough that it
And I would before, I would before that then.
So it's 20 foot? Okay. So there wouldn't be any other conditions because we covered it with the with their explanation of what's gonna happen, right?
Correct.
Alright. Somebody like to make a motion?
I will.
Either deny these, these people the, this variance.
Yeah, I will. Mr. Chairman, I move that the zoning board grant a variance to Jane Amico and Brian McCray of 55, 5506 Sandstone Way in Fayetteville. The variance is for the installation of a pool. It is, they have a current existing rear setback of 22 feet. They're gonna need a variance of 20 feet to meet the required 40 foot setback.
Yep. And we get, was that we have a second?
I'll second it.
Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Nobody, okay. Well, you've been granted your Well, you've been granted your, uh. Your variance, uh, oh, I forgot this, uh. Um. Um, there's, uh, there's no impact on the environment, I propose a type-two action on C Core. Uh, and no further review is required. And we grant, um, and grant you the variance.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay?
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Now, um.
Jamie, do we need to go back and do the C Core thing for the first one, because he didn't?
Just, just to put it on.
Just make sure, just make sure we have it on record.
We, you, we can do that to put it on record, but it, because it's a type-two, you don't actually need the, the seeker at all. So it, it's self-affectuating, but sure, I, I, we like to, as, to formalize it, we can do that.
Yeah, we just. Um. Let's see, um. This is for the, uh, which shed, um, variance? And again, the, um, uh, C Core, uh, there's no impact on the environment and I propose a type-two action. Uh. And no further review is required. Okay?
So the motion to modify the, um. The resolution for the first.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all right, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, um. Do we have any other business before the committee? Didn't we cover everything? Did I forget something?
Oh, you've got everything.
Everything good?
All of the new zoning changes are, have been approved and are active now, right?
Yes, I sent you all that documentation, yes.
Yeah, I read through, I just wanted to make sure it was all, because it was approved on by the board and everything, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes, it was.
Oh, when'd you send that?
It was in the packet for this month.
Oh, I didn't get the packet, I got pieces of it. But I'll stop in and pick up a copy if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
Is there any other business before the committee? Anything we need to bring up? No, okay, do I have a motion that we close? No?
I make a motion, we close the meeting?
A second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other business, then let's vote, all in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening.
Have a good one, everyone.
Bye-bye.